Morning, everybody. I'll call the regular meeting of Commissioners Court to order at this time at 9:01. And first of all, thank you, welcome, everybody, this morning. It's an exciting morning for me, my first morning sitting here, as well as Commissioner Lawler. We'll get through this one, and the rest of you seniors on the court, be easy on us today, okay? Cut us a little slack.
I'll just say I'm not the rookie anymore.
Right, exactly, sir.
Well, one thing I want to make clear, I told you, if you walk outside, there's a sign there that says Commissioners Court, it don't have your name on it.
I'm very aware of that. I've looked at it. I actually installed that sign. I put the sign on the wall.
165 on top of it.
I know exactly where it is. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Item number two, discuss and take possible action on approval of payroll number two for the period ending January 20th.
I'll move you to approval number two.
I'll second the payroll.
All right, number three, discuss, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor, have a motion to second, all in favor.
All right.
All opposed, same sign. All right, item number three, discuss and take possible action on approval of personal action forms.
Okay, the first one is New Hare County Park's office, Janey Orndy. Jacob Moreno, Sheriff's Office, correction to the wages. Joy Tapia, dismissal. Leah Mouser, increase in slot. Garrett Cleveland, increase in slot. Frank Henderson, in Hare and Public Defender's Office. Gander Rodriguez, transferred to investigative. Deb.
I'll move you to approve personal action forms.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the personal action forms, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item number four, discuss and take possible action on filing of conflict of interest disclosures with the county auditor's office by Commissioner Danny Lawler and vendor Harrison Supply and Market.
Yeah, so this is to acknowledge that Commissioner Lawler, precinct four, does have ownership of more than 10% with a vendor that he purchases from regularly. And so, all we're going to ask is that he abstain from taking action on accounts payable when there's Harrison supplies, and also from approving his own invoices, which we've already worked that out. The conflict of interest is there, we just acknowledge it.
Okay, so on those, because we do quite a bit of business with them, so will you just, will you separate, will you separate that out, or how will that work?
Just, everyone else can vote, and just me too, so they'll just abstain whenever there is Harrison supply on there, then I'll do my best to let you know, and you'll just won't participate on that vote.
I'll move we approve the filing of conflict of interest disclosure with Commissioner Danny Lawler.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the conflict of interest disclosure among Commissioner Daniel Lawler and the vendor Harrison Supply and Market, all in favor.
All right.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item five, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of the statement of grant award for bullet resistant shield grant program for the sheriff's office.
So this is a grant required for, it's, oh, go ahead. So it's a total amount of $16,000 to purchase 16 bulletproof shield, shields at $1,000 apiece, and they're going to be located at each Medina County School District building, if you can elaborate on that. So yeah, it's $16,000, David can tell you.
This is, this is a vision, Sheriff Brown had a vision after U Valley, was that we acquire bulletproof shields along with other breaching tools that we can place at the entrance of a school building, whether it's elementary, I call them junior high, if they're middle school now, high school, and, excuse me, preschooler, we're going to develop a box that we're able to swipe a card, or a combination, open it up, the first officer can extract that shield, and move forward to the threat, along with breaching tools.
So is 16 going to cover the schools that we have?
The 16 is going to cover the schools that we currently have, but not my Honda ISD district, because they're covered by a local police agency. Divine is covered by a local municipality agency, and so is Natale, so we are covering Lio, Medina Valley ISD, De Henness ISD.
And all law enforcement would have access to that?
Yes, if you have a card, the goal is, our card will give us access to it. If that's not acceptable, then we're going to do a combination, that everyone will have a combination.
I'll move that we accept a statement of grant award for bullet resistant shield grant program.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second that we accept the statement of grant for the shield, bullet resistant shield program, all in favor. All right. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Yes, sir. Next item number six, discuss and take possible action on approval of budget amendments.
So the only budget amendment we have is the one we just discussed, since it will increase the bottom line for our total revenue and total expenses, $16,000 in grant revenue, and then $16,000 in equipment.
I'll move you to budget amendment.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the budget amendment, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item seven, discuss and take possible action on approval of line item transfer.
We do, we have three. First one is for precinct four, we're going to increase capital outlay by $50,000, moving from his reserves to capital outlay. Second one is, there's going to be a change on that one, talk to Commissioner Newman, instead of increasing his capital outlay by 120, we're going to do 150,000, and that should cover any projected projects that he has. And then the last point is for the sheriff's office, and we are increasing capital outlay again by $20,000 to purchase 65 new weapons, handguns. And, I don't know if we want to move that item up.
Yes, we can.
I'll move you to approve line item transfers.
Okay. I have a motion and a second that we approve the line item transfers, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the, Edward, you wanted to go ahead and move up to the...
I figured we were going to do it with that line item transfer, but we can move it up, since it is, so 21, item 21.
Okay. Okay, so item 21, we want to move up to take care of this at the same time, the same items of discuss and take possible action on firearms purchase for Medina County Sheriff's Office. You want us to do that?
So, myself, Matthew Mann with the sheriff, a couple of weeks ago, and his intention is to replace the current handguns that they utilize now, which is a 40 caliber, and switch them over to a 9 millimeter. I asked for a line item transfer, since initially we will be using general funds to purchase these weapons, the expectation is to receive a donation at some point down the line for this expense, but since we don't have that donation right now, I wanted to make it clear to the court that we will use general funds to make this purchase. If for some reason we don't get that donation, then the court has already approved the expense out of transfer funds. So this line item is basically allowing him to make the purchase, purchase new handguns.
What will happen with the 40 calibers we have now?
We're getting credit for them, please, sir.
So, what we'll do, I've got a copy here for you. Somebody else, we may not be aware, some of you are, that ammo that was ordered over a year ago, we never received, and then we started looking at some new ammo, a different caliber, and the 9 millimeter with the new ammo, I know you're somewhat familiar, it's a new shooter. The front is a kind of a promissory letter, this is not going to cost the county a penny, but like Edward said, until we receive them, we have to order and receive them, then we'll get the donation then. So there's a tray of the Glock 40s, GT struders, and then with the tray and the money that we will have to pay is on the, on that second page there.
So you have a lot of...
And if you look at the front, the donations for that, $19,000.
I bet.
Which we could have ammo today.
That's how you go over it.
That's how quick we can.
That's where all your weapons is. Yes.
Those are all.
Ammo, 9 millimeters have really changed, Danny, you're the guy, the new ammo, when they come out with the plus speed, kind of changed the world for 9 millimeter, this G9 that we're going to, there's a stolen company that makes it, that's what we're getting at, the Marshals are all going to, there's a lot of agencies that have gone to the curfew and is already carrying them, so the nine's a little better patrol pistol, because of the recoil, you can stay on target better, so we've done a lot of shooting on the range, y'all probably seen some demonstration.
Yeah, we saw it, we went, and saw the demonstration, and they actually see this ammo was putting out, unbelievable.
The ammo's very impressive, especially on a physical assault, that type of assault, very impressive.
I'll move that we approve the firearm purchase.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the firearm purchase for the sheriff's office, in the amount of $19,869.50 through GT Districts. Good, all in favor? All opposed?
Motion carries.
Judge, do you want to move to the next one that recognizes the donor?
Oh, we can, we can go ahead and do that now, we need to part with this.
We haven't received it yet.
Right, so what, to acknowledge who this is?
Oh, yes, we're not going to guess.
Yeah, so item 22 is just to discuss and take possible action on cash donation from Spicer-Sigman, to offset the cost of the firearm purchase by Medina County Sheriff's Office.
I'll approve that, mind.
I have a motion and a second that we approve all of the minimum of Spicer-Sigman's dollar for the firearm purchase, in the amount of $19,869.50. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Director, ready? This group, before the Director, knows we receive the actual donation, we'll bring it back to court to accept the actual action.
We'll have to accept that donation. We'll have to accept that donation.
Right, right.
I think, I'm just going to say that the donor really would have loved the part to be honest, this isn't about him, he didn't want to be recognized, we're the county government, we don't have any choice, so I just want to make sure people know, he really did, he wanted to do this, and just do it, but it wasn't possible, so thank you, thank you. Okay, number eight, discuss and take possible action on the approval of the 2019 F-450 in the amount of $62,000 for precinct one from Bandera ISD pursuant to local government code 262.0249C, and this is for Commissioner Newman.
Yeah, it is one of those later Facebook funds, they put it online, of course, questions coming to mind, why are you getting rid of it? What's wrong with it? You know, and his answer was, it was too much truck for his activity. Looked at it, it's clean, it's only got 15,000 miles on it, 2019 model, is it a state park? It's ready to go out on the road, we don't have to take it, put a bed on it, nothing. And to buy a truck, that F-450 at this price, and to get a bed installed, we're probably looking at $90,000, easy. So, I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of the 2019 F-450 for the amount of $62,000 from Bandera ISD.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the 2019 F-450 in the amount of $62,000 for precinct one from Bandera ISD, any discussion? I did, I actually run into the people from Bandera in the grocery store, told me that they've since had local people that want the truck, and were asking me if we were going to know, I said, well, today. So I think, I mean, I think it's a really good deal, that you can't find anything like this, you can't even get a new one, we've been waiting for, forever.
We're waiting for one from Cecil since David was interested in it, and six months later, we're still, they don't have an idea what's that.
Well, the sheriff finally put nine of their, eight of his Tahos on the road from October of '21, that we got on the road, what, three, two weeks ago, Sheriff?
They look nice.
Yeah.
I like the way you changed your decal, too.
Looks nice.
Awesome, okay, I will, all in favor of the motion, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine, discuss and take possible action on approval of third installment payment for Sago Internet using the ARPA funds.
So, this is the third payment of $200,000 for Sago, and on this packet here, you have a bank ledger, and then also an Excel spreadsheet detailing all the expenses. I didn't personally go take a look at these towers, Beverly, my current assistant, did. I would go take a look at our networks towers, I mean, it's just kind of crazy how they're working in the areas that they're providing internet for. So they're requesting an additional $200,000 out of the $700 that we awarded them. Do you have any questions on these expenses?
My only question is, and I get calls daily, my area, north of Rio Medina, takes in Cedars Pass on one side of the valley, takes in Ridgeview, Grand Glen Acres on the other side, they have nothing. You're luckily get a good AT&amp;T phone tower, much less anything else, they have nothing up there, and the people up there in Tan District, they got nothing, as of today.
Right, so I do know, I do know that Sago's looking at that area, because I had a discussion, I mean, they're actively pursuing...
Well, I net was working, looking at one, too.
Right, where they're going to do, well, Rio Medina area, he's also putting his, because we visited with him a couple of days ago, we went out and looked at the two sites that he's built, and he's got three more, and basically, he's building a big ring, and one of them is in that Rio Medina area, so between them and Sago, they're kind of pushing that whole north, and we've also went back and taken a look at the Texas, they have a, already that shows all the broadband for the state, where it shows the underserved and what's not served at all, so we're looking at all that and making sure that we can, you know, start to look at any of those, but like in the case of Joey's part of it, you know, what he's doing right now, he's putting up these really tall, like 180-foot towers that he's building, basically, it's the whole ring, and then off of those, that'll go to like little small 30, 40-foot towers that can serve, you know, large, like the neighborhoods and stuff. So, the first portion of his money, he told us, I think $400,000, is what he spent on this first phase, and then he's got the other $300,000 that'll really start drilling down into the actual area, so.
I know Verizon is active, putting in several in that area, real active.
Just to make sure, I said that they're providing internet, but like Judge here said, they're at the very early stages right now, they're creating the base for it, and then after that, that's when they'll start delivering to residential outlets, but it's still very early.
So the big tower, for example, he told us it'll do about, right off of that tower, it does about an eight-mile out radius or so from the big tower, so there's two of those up, so he's got, you know, two like that now, there'll be five of those, and then from there, like I say, shoots it off further into the smaller, so I think, I mean, they're definitely working on the plan and getting it out there, but you know, they have to have the backbone of it built before they can go further with it, so I know their plan for sure, and of course, we're going to be looking more at the Sago's plan, because we do, the intention of this is to get it into those underserved or not served at all areas, so...
We have a map from Sago, actually, I think around that area.
I've got it almost, everybody knows it more than one.
Did it cover that area?
It shows it, they've covered it, but there's nothing there.
I can reach out to them, see what stage they're at, see if they're even able to provide it, or if it's a plan, they're just providing to that specific area, I can get with them.
We have some new information, I think Beverly will have, if you look, because we have the new mapping of where the next phase is, which was up on that north end, and they actually reached out about that, with their, last week, you know, saying that they're working on that, it's a piece now, so. The Sago side is probably a little bit further away, because they're working, they've done one up in Quadrant East, they've done another one down on 73 millimeter, and they've been down by over kind of the Divine, Natalia area, and then back up to Rio Medina, and then obviously one somewhere, they've got three of them. And they're doing all the work themselves, so it's taking a little bit of extra time, trying to be cost effective.
I'll move you approve the third payment to Sago.
All right, I have a motion and a second that we approve the third installment payment to Sago Internet from the ARPA funds, all in favor? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10, discuss and take possible action on authorization to borrow $1.343 million from the general fund for the tan and CO payments.
Yes, the payments are 2.1 million, and we have about $894,000 in the debt fund, but the taxes are coming in, so the general fund will be repaid. This is an every-year issue.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion to authorize borrowing of $1.343 million from the general fund for the tan and CO payments.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11, discuss and take possible action on approval of accounts payable.
Yes, the cover page shows the over $10,000 checks that we send, we have firearm payments that are listed, it's state fees, we'll be paying the last quarter state fees, we have jail prison care, and the two add-ons that you just approved, the total without the add-ons is $3,966,839.67, the majority of that is the debt payments.
Commissioners, Judge, I do want to bring to your attention, I think there are officers, something we haven't seen, and my orders, nothing against the law, preventing from approving the claims, but it is my job to lead Commissioners Court, so we had Department Head purchase some challenge points as a token of their appreciation. We've never done that before, again, there's nothing against the law, it says the county should not be for that, but I know personally, and I know a handful of other Department Heads who purchased appreciation tokens or gifts out of their own funds, personal funds. So again, it's up to Commissioners Court to approve this, not approve it, and if y'all approve it, then at least countywide, Department Heads, elected officials know that we can legalize some of our budget for expenses like that, and if not, then again, we all know that we should not be purchasing appreciation tokens of such. So again, it's just up for discussion, either for or against it, so.
Sir?
No motion.
Okay. What's that?
No more, no.
Well, we actually don't have it as an action item on the agenda, so it's really an information, the question is inside of here, because it's in the...
It's being paid, yes.
It's being paid in here.
Yeah, it's in the county, county's own account, so.
So, I mean, the question is, you know, we get, the question is, do you guys have a problem with y'all being able to do something, I know that some departments obviously do it, Sheriff, y'all do this, right? Y'all have the...
Yes, we look into that, it's out of their forfeiture account, which...
Right, so that comes out of the forfeiture account, but, I mean, that's, it's up to you guys.
I'd rather it not be done out of county funds.
Exactly.
Okay.
Same.
Okay.
And I'll make that motion when I...
Make a motion on that, definitely.
Well, we'll have, there are two things we can do, since it seems like we're not going to allow this, we can either ask for reimbursement to the county, or if we can return the items, two of those things, and I can work that out with that office.
Yeah, I made the comfortable reimbursement, that's the one we're on very far.
Right, yeah, recently, we had, where the cemetery is...
It was the same thing.
Yep.
I can, I can change them up.
Okay, so you go, what do you...
I'll make a motion, no, I'll make a motion that we approve accounts payable, including the add-ons, and accepting this particular payment, or we're going to...
Again, we, y'all can approve it, but it's been decided that this purchase should not be allowed, since it is on a county account, I believe we'll have to pay for it, and then ask for reimbursement, or if the items are still boxed or packaged, we can't possibly return those items, and then just get credit back.
Well, then we'll prove payment of it, including...
I'll do what they want, I'll do that.
All right, in my opinion, so let your motion, we have a second on your motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the exception of the one bill, oh, we're going to, I'm sorry, we're going to put it in the ready papers, so, motion and a second, all in favor, aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Motion carries. All right, discuss and take possible action on approval of disbursement of funds since last Commissioners Court meeting.
Yes, utilities, in the amount of $3,872.32 for disbursements.
I'll move we approve disbursement of funds since last Commissioners Court meeting.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 13, discuss and take possible action on approval of County Treasurer's monthly report.
This is for the month of November, the ending cash balance on November 30th, combined funds is $24,274,751.42, total debt owed by Medina County, $26,840,427. The reports, the fee office report, we still have not received District Court civil reports from January through October of last year, and the county clerk civil from November 21st through October 22nd. We have the funds in escrow, they just not, until we receive the report, we can't move them to the funds that belong to it.
And that data on both reports, we are working with those offices, we have a scheduled meeting for, not next week, but the following week, try to get the county clerk, district clerk together, possibly the treasurer's office, to see where the discrepancies coming from, and hopefully we can get those funds moved out of escrow into their respective funds.
Debbie, I noticed on the debt schedule...
Yes.
You've got some of the tan stuff listed here, and I think on the, I asked Edward about this, it doesn't show the precinct three equipment that we purchased.
The fund, where you borrow the funds from the town, we don't use that on our debt schedule.
Maybe that's what you meant, you were probably looking at the treasurer's, we added it at the bottom, but it's technically not an additional debt to the county.
Okay.
I'm going to approve the County Treasurer's monthly report.
I'll take it.
Have a motion in a second to approve County Treasurer's monthly reports, any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we did receive the outdoor taxes for December, last week or the week before. So, things are looking up.
Item number fourteen, introduction of our Tac HR consultant, Glenda.
Well, did we finish it, well, did you finish your vote?
I did, yes. I did, right. We voted. Yes.
Okay, aye.
Thank you for checking though.
I'd like to introduce State Director Consultant for this area, it's written, Sharona Langenshow, and she brought some friends with her, so.
It's amazing, they will be getting free tax breaks.
So she's also going to be supporting for us today. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having me here today. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself, since you have a new judge and commissioner here in Medina County. And just kind of give you a little background on me. I started with Tac in November of 2020. I was previously the HR Director in Guadalupe County, served as HR Director for two years. Had a total of 13 years in Guadalupe County, worked in the HR department. I, part of my role at Tac is to provide training for our counties, our members, in different subjects. If you turn to the booklet that Victor provided to you, provided to you before court, on page 16 is kind of where our courses start. We offer a variety of risk control services, not only in safety through our risk control consultant, but I provide you HR trainings on employment law. It can be family medical leave. I have done a training on documentation for your supervisors. And my primary role at Tac in the risk pool is to help you prevent liabilities of the county. So I'm always available to provide training, whether it comes through a recommendation from Glenda or from the court or Department Heads. Most of the training that you see on this page is going to be directed to Department Heads, elected officials and supervisors. The one training that we do provide for all employees and supervisors, elected officials, is harassment training. It's not anything that's required by law. I think in the private sector, it's required for employers, but not in the public sector, but we do recommend it as best practice. Just to let employees know that it is important for them to report this type of behavior when they see it in the county, so that it helps to prevent liability. But I'm also available for technical assistance. I speak to Glenda pretty regularly. She'll call me and just kind of get my opinion on something, when most of the time she already knows the answer on what the question is. So we have very good working relationships. And today, as she said, I'm providing training to your road bridge supervisors on best practices on being a supervisor. And that'll be this afternoon here in the courtroom. If any of you are here, you're welcome to attend if you would like to.
We have, we should have a bird for you before you.
Oh, right, right there. She warned me ahead of time. I would like to preface that though with saying that I did start my career at Guadalupe County in Road Bridge. So I'm very familiar with working with those employees, so I'm not scared. I'll be all right. But I also learned to introduce, introduce part of my team that's here today. Victor Uvay, which most of you already know, he's our risk management consultant. And he's spent a lot of time with Tac over 20 years. And he is here to kind of help you with any renewal questions you have or coverage questions. He's always available to you, email, phone call, all of our contact information is in the back of that book. And then also I'd like to introduce David Whitis. He is your law enforcement consultant and he is here to, or he is able to provide technical assistance, not only to the, excuse me, to the sheriff's office, but to provide training to your employees as well. Suicide prevention training in your jail, which is a big topic, and other types of training as well. But we are here as a resource for you. We appreciate you being members of the pool. And if there's ever anything that we can do to assist you, please feel free to reach out to us at any time.
Any questions or, thank you so much for being here. I've, I feel like I'm part of the Tac family already. I've seen a whole lot of y'all in the last 45 days, and a lot more to go.
I'm sorry, we don't need to overburden.
No, it's good, no, just all the training, everything I'm going to see is Tac, so it's good.
It's good training.
Yeah, great training.
And I'm going to thank y'all for y'all's services from, from one department plum up to y'all legally. I use y'all weekly. On one aspect or another. We have never had another association come together and help accounting like Tac has helped us.
Well, thank you very much, that means a lot. We appreciate you very much. And as I said, if there's any of you have an issue reaching out to another Department at Tac, please feel free to call us and we can help facilitate that for you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item fifteen, do we have any visitor or public comments? None? Okay, excellent. So at this time, we will go into recess. It is 9:37 and we will reconvene at 10 o'clock. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will reconvene the session of the regular Commissioners' Court. First item, just want to, if we could, go back to item number seven, have a correction from the auditor, just a small correction on the line item transfer.
Yeah, this is the, the line item transfer that was approved for the sheriff's office. It's, we're actually moving funds into general supplies, not capital outlay, since each weapon cost is under $500.
So we just need to, can y'all give us a motion that instead of generals, sorry, instead of capital outlay, it's to general supplies?
I made the motion, we amend the line item transfers to general supplies instead of capital outlay.
Second?
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you, sir. All right, next item up, we have item number 16 this morning and excited about having this item on here. It's our district oratorical contest winner is going to, is with us this morning. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Jerome Eltes with the American Legion to come forward and say a few words.
Thank you, Judge, members of the Commissioners' Court. I am Jerome Eltes, I'm the commander of the 23rd District of the American Legion. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here to publicly thank you for allowing us to use the courthouse for our district oratorical contest. And I'd like to thank specifically Joey Tapia Bailiff for his assistance to help us, show us around and help us with the, the program, the contest. What is the American Legion and what is the oratorical contest? A lot of people don't know either. And I, the best way I have to explain it is to tell you what I ask veterans, military veterans, when I see them. I ask them if they feel they have a sense of obligation to continue serving their country after they're discharged from military active duty. And unanimously, they'll always say yes. And I say, well, how better to do that than in the American Legion? I tell them that the American Legion is the oldest and largest veteran service organization in the country. We've been around for over 100 years. And I tell them that we have a very noble purpose. Our overarching purpose is for God and country. And we associate ourselves together for 10 specific purposes. The very first one of those 10 purposes is to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Well, how do we do that? We don't wear the uniform anymore. We do it by teaching our youth about it through this awesome program we call the oratorical contest. It's a speech contest where this contestants, high school students, speak about the Constitution. They're required to speak for eight to 10 minutes about some aspect of the Constitution with no notes. And so they have to research their speech, compose it, memorize it and deliver it to an audience which includes five distinguished prominent citizens. And so I always ask them after their speeches, before we announce the winner. Do you know more about the Constitution now than before the contest? And unanimously, they'll always say yes. I say, well, by virtue of them saying yes, we have fulfilled our purpose to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. So with that, again, I thank you for allowing us the use of the courthouse, awesome venue to have the contest. And I hope we can use that again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, so I was actually able to attend and listen to these fine young people. This was, what is it called, area or regional?
This is district.
District, okay, so district contest, so there were actually students from Laredo at that contest.
The district is an eight county region of southwest Texas that includes the counties Webb, Jim Harlan, Maverick, Dimon, Zavala, LaSalle, Rio and Medina.
Awesome. So they were fan, they were fantastic, the orations that they gave. And at this time, I'm going to introduce, and Aiden is going to give his for us this morning. So Mr. Aiden Fish was the winner of that contest. He is 16 years old, he's a junior at Medina Valley High School. I don't know if that's because he's, is that because he's 16 or Medina Valley or a junior, is it, or all of them?
All for him, all.
Awesome. His parents are Jonathan and Christie Fish. So in Aiden's free time, he competes in several UIL events, including literary criticism. He also participates in the legal office procedures competition in the Business Professionals of America. He's also an extemporaneous speaking competition at speech and debate tournaments. His hobbies include reading southern literature, baking cookies, I don't, didn't see any cookies with you this morning. And spending time with his dog. Aiden would like to study economics in college with a goal of working at an international agency which assists poor countries. Also, he hopes one day to work on a political campaign and eventually run for an elected office. Ladies and gentlemen, would you welcome Mr. Aiden Fish, winner of the contest, right here. The stage is yours, Aiden. So he's going to give his oration at this time that he gave at the contest.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the court for allowing me to give my speech here today. I thoroughly appreciate the opportunity. I love Taylor Swift. It is one of the great facts of my life. I'm a dedicated Swiftie and it relates to just about anything that I do. There is no way for me to avoid it. Every element of life, including the Constitution, I like to think I can tie to Miss Taylor Swift. Both the Constitution and Miss Taylor Swift especially were burdened by a power greater than themselves. And they sought empowerment through a way of authenticity, by expressing who they really were, by saying their truth. So today, that's what we'll be talking about. How the Constitution enables us to speak our truths. And specifically, our truths via dissent, disagreeing opinions. And we're going to talk about this through three primary means. First, the right to actually speak and to criticize within society. Second, the right to protest. And third, and possibly most importantly, the right to vote. The year was 1798 and John Adams was the second president of these United States. He was a founding father, a wealthy industrialist, and had a strong history of pro free speech attitudes. He had defended unpopular positions as with British captain Thomas Preston and had made difficult decisions within his life. Throughout this advocacy for free speech, he emerged as a leading figure in his society. Yet as president in 1798, he helped pass the Alien and Sedition Acts, which said that anybody who uttered, published or promoted any false scandalous or malicious information could be charged with a crime and sent to jail. Now, the modern standard for false or scandalous or malicious is very, very vague. I know myself firsthand that it could be lunchroom gossip, it could be a tweet sent out. It could be small little tidbits of information. It could be TMZ or the New York Post. The effect of this was to stifle speech. This president, who was so strong of free speech advocate earlier in his days as a founding father, went against the freedom of the people, went against free speech when he was in power. Because he knew that the rights that free speech gives enable citizens. It makes the job of leaders more difficult and that is a good thing. But he didn't like that, he couldn't support that because it would hold him accountable. Next, we can look to more modern examples, like the Watergate crisis. Many prominent people, through the work of relatively unknown individuals, Carl Bernstein and Lonnie were, were brought down. This had big ramifications for the present. Altogether, without that ability to criticize, leaders would not be held accountable. The role of the public would have nothing to do with the role of the leader. And government would not be able to stand as an institute for the people. In our own House of Representatives, the ability to criticize is incredibly irrelevant. There were a crazy chaotic few days of House speakership votes. And House members showed us very definitively that they were very fond of using their freedom of speech. While this same right did not exist for British members of Parliament during the colonial era. They could speak their piece when in Parliament. They could say what they wanted behind closed doors, whenever it was just them in the room debating bills. But as soon as they stepped out of Parliament, they lost the ability to speak freely. The result is that the status quo continued. Progress became harder to advance. This continues to the present. Today, you must have freedom of speech in order to advance your cause. Similarly, we see Twitter as a means of mass media. Other platforms like Instagram and Facebook popularize dissent. They make it public so easily in a way that was never available before. And while I would be the first to admit that there are all kinds of vile, disgusting and just general kinds of free speech that I don't frankly want to hear. The fact that people can have opinions that I disagree with is the same right that I have to express opinions that they would disagree with. It enables debate in society and it pushes us away from that status quo and towards progress. Next, we can look to protests as a means of advancing freedom of speech and dissenting opinions. In 1913, around 5,000 women organized in Washington DC. There were floats and gowns and what was basically a long procession down Pennsylvania Avenue. Yet it was a peaceful procession with posters and signs and chanting. There were no weapons, nobody was being hurt. They were simply expressing a desire for suffrage. Yet nevertheless, members of the public came out and they beat, they assaulted these women, these peaceful protesters who were just expressing their peace. We must ask why this happened. And we can see in the present that the influence of the ability to vote and women as voters would hurt some of these people because they didn't want to let go of their power. They didn't want to live in a more equal, more fair society. The advocacy for this progress came as a result of protest. It came as a result of unpopular opinion. And those that sought to stifle these opinions sought to stifle progress. In a similar scenario, we can look to civil rights protests in 1965. A 54 mile march from Selma to Montgomery, where protesters and marchers were injured simply for expressing a belief in equality. People have the power to make change and the ability to make change can be a threat to leaders. But this is a threat in the sense that it provokes change. It makes a society more like its people, a place where more. more like its people, a place where more people would want to live, where more people can hear their voices represented and accurately told within the story. We can look to some more controversial modern examples of protests. Now, although these range to different ends of the political spectrum, no matter where you fall, we can still take a lesson from both of these. The annual March for Life, which is an anti-abortion protest, and the annual March for Our Lives, which is an anti-gun violence protest, and gun regulation protest, have both had long-term implications. This year, gun legislation passed the Senate for the first time in decades on a consequential level. Similarly, the Supreme Court enacted restrictions on the process of abortion. No matter where you fall on the spectrum, whether you agree with these decisions or not, it is impossible to deny that these protests, these long-term disagreements with the status quo have had an effect. They are shaping legislation within our society, and their influence must be acknowledged. Next, we can look to the right to vote. During the colonial era, only white male landowners had the ability to vote. It was a very unequal society, and power was distributed with a small few. In America, there was taxation without representation, and that became a rallying cry. Individuals wanted representation, and then they would pay their taxation. But taxation without representation is a fundamental problem of where the person falls within their society, whether or not their society respects them. It is through dissent, it is through peaceful protests and actions, which in America manifest as voting during the colonial period, for our own representatives, which brought about some of this influential change that we see today. Similarly, the status of white male landowners has declined, and society has progressively become more equal. The rights of non-white people, the rights of women, have been advanced over the years, but not without struggle. It is at the ballot box that change can be made, that representatives can be elected who support you and your values. Many people, especially people my age, say that voting doesn't matter, and it really bothers me. I look at examples like the USN election in Nevada, where Katherine Corso Mattstone won by just over 8,000 votes over her opponent Adam Blaxall. It was a razor-thin margin in a statewide contest, and if the amount of people who believed that their voice did not matter actually went out and voted for the opposing candidate, they could have switched the election and its results. But they didn't. But this is where the issue comes in, getting involved, showing dissent within your society. Whether in a presidential election, or simply thinking about it in the context of your own neighborhood, people must make their own voices heard. If you don't believe that your vote will change in an election, if you don't think that your race will turn out that you're voting in, if you don't think that the race you're voting in will turn out like, say, the Attorney General's race in Arizona, where Republican Aiden Meda lost by around 510 votes out of 2.5 million, if you can't believe in something like that, believe in your community. Believe that your vote balances out the vote of your neighbor, that you on a local level are making change, that when you might disagree with somebody and get huffy about it, this is your chance to actually show your values and what you support. So in a word, the value of dissent in society is unparalleled. It prevents the continuation of the status quo, it progresses us forward, it gives us social and political reform, and it puts us within the broader process. We become part of the system through dissent, whether that means protest, whether that means using our right to vote, or whether that means simply criticizing what we disagree with. It is a fundamental right as an American, and it must be used, or else you will forever be accepting the status quo, and even be deserving of the status quo that you get if you do not participate in the process. This is a right which must be used, otherwise, as I, and I think Miss Taylor Allison Swift would agree, there will be many cruel midnights still ahead.
Awesome. Thank you, Aiden. We appreciate it. It's phenomenal to have young people. That's very, very, very difficult to do, I think we all know that, and he did a great job. And I know he enjoyed this more, because at the end of the contest, you cannot applaud for anybody, so he just has to walk out of a room like, did they like it or not? This is a lot more fun, right, Aiden? Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate you. All right, next, well, do we have any other, are there any other public comments? Anybody sign up for any other comments? Okay, very good. Okay. At this time, item number 17, recognition of election staff member Jeanne Legoria as state registered elections official. Our elections administrator, Mr. Torres?
Morning, gentlemen. I would like to ask the court to acknowledge the accomplishment of this, one of my staff members, Jeanne Legoria. She has completed a professional curriculum of multiple courses, in which it covers knowledge of specific requirements of Texas law and practices related to the voter registration and elections administration. So she is now a Texas registered elections official. I think in just the five years I've been here, no one has ever had the opportunity to go to this course. I don't recall anything in the past. I think this office has been in existence since, I believe, 2008. So I am given the opportunity for my staff to advance in their knowledge, and so I'm here to bring her up to the front, so the court can acknowledge her for her accomplishments.
Awesome. Congratulations, Jeanne Legoria. You did a fantastic job. We appreciate you. Anybody going and doing higher education and excelling to the next level, I think is a wonderful thing.
Thank you. I'm grateful for the opportunity to obtain more knowledge in the elections department.
Just like this young man said about voter participation, that's why we're here. We're trying to get the community more involved, participate in the process. When you have 35-plus thousand people and you only get 40% of the votes out, yes, I understand what he's coming to, that participation, the more people participate, the better. My goal has always been 100%. Is that ever going to happen? Probably not, but it's a goal to have. So that's why we're here, and that's what Miss Legoria is here for. She's trying to, we're trying to improve the office as best as we can through this curriculum. We're trying to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You want to take a picture?
Yes.
We're doing retakes, or?
Last time was small for him.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, next item 18, discuss and take possible action on final approval of revised private road 1505 in Holiday Villages of Medina, Laguna de Medina, Section G.
Okay, so this one we've been going back and forth on. There was concerns about the Edwards October recharge zone. I've reached out to the general manager, and he's provided us, provided the court with the document showing that it is not in the recharge zone, but it is in the contributing zone. And the only obstacle we had to worry about was overhead or underground storage for fuel tanks. This does not have that, so that's at a fight, that concern. Next, we requested the developer put in barricade and fencing. Here's the start of the fencing. I have an invoice from the contractor, where they have been paid in full. Barricade has started, they have all the posts in, they're running the cable, and sorry, when I was up there, this is where it was at. I do have an invoice that was paid in full from the developer. I have a document from the engineer, where he has ran all his grades and everything, and the drainage is where it's supposed to be. The developer has put a 10-year warranty on this section, but for some reason, the drainage causes damage to the roads and areas they were paying for. The lot sizing, we have, the smallest lot was 18,000 square foot, subdivision does have a treatment plant and water. Lots were smaller at one time than what it is now. I can't see how this court could hold it any longer. So with that recommendation, I will get final approval for Section G.
I'll second. Well, here we go.
I would like to speak to those comments.
Who's the landlord?
Yes, sir. Did you sign up in public comments?
Oh, I didn't know that you had to sign up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead, you can just make it very brief, please. Go ahead.
Well, last time we had a section for public comment, last time.
Yes. Maybe you can go ahead and make your comments, sir.
There's pictures of what we bought into, and what we have.
We bought into a gated community of security, and we had fences that showed up front, and on the fences on each side of us, and the lake on the other side, and the other side was the county road. And the county road, there was about a quarter of a mile or more of woods that wasn't open, that you had to go through to get to the community. We had a problem with break-ins. We had a lot of break-ins on, if you see from picture one to where the main entrance gate to subcontractors' gate. And it was a bobbard fence, and they came up, when they opened it up, when they sold it, and they've broken up houses there, they cleared it up, and then people just started cutting the fence and coming in through people's yards. And so the developer agreed to put chain-link fence up. And on picture two, I think it is, it shows the chain-link fence they put up from there around to construction gate, and then the construction gate there. And then the last two pictures shows what it is down there, and the last picture shows where they've made a road in there into our subdivision on the back side that opened us up to whoever wanted to come in. It's still open yesterday evening.
Well, this is just the start of it. But like Keith and I both told you last time, that's an HOA issue. The county cannot go and make a person put a fence up on their property. We don't have that authority. He's starting on his land. That's going to be an HOA issue.
Okay, you say that, but to do what that, then you have to have a lawyer and all that. The only thing that we have is our leverage to approve a replant our subdivision. So if that's your ruling, there's nothing I can do about it, but it's not right. And that's my opinion about what this boy said, and I want to voice it.
I completely understand that, but the state does not give county government authority to dictate what somebody does on their private property.
It gives you authority on subdivisions.
And he's working on his property.
But he has to go by subdivision regulations, you haven't got that in there. Okay.
He's constructing the fence on what we asked him to do. Now, other landowners have reached out to us along that road, asking if they could clear the brush so they could keep going with the fence, and we have advised them with that ability to clean the brush away from there. So it's in progress, it's not going to happen overnight.
Okay. Okay, on the TCQ recharge zone?
This comes from the general manager of Edwards October.
Okay, I've got documents.
All right, sir, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, we only do three minutes, and it's well beyond here, so we're gonna have to wrap this up. I mean, it's gonna be up to the commissioners if they, I mean, we're limited on what we can do. If we've met, if he's met all the requirements that the county needs to meet, then it will become a civil issue that you'll have to take up, take up through your HOA, whatever you need to do. I mean, we're limited by what we can do, and what the plat, and how we can approve it.
Okay, in your subdivision rules, regulations, it says on the Aqua Fire recharge zone, it goes to the Vander Medina County line. Is that what it says on there?
We have addressed that, and he addressed it a few moments ago, and told you what the ruling was. He talked directly to them, and he has determined that we are not, you're not out of complaint.
And it says northeastern on there, right? It says northeastern.
TCQ gives the right to the county whether to add the contributing zone to the county line or not, and by dog y'all's doctrine, it shows that y'all addressed that and added it to the county line, to the contributing zone, to the Aqua Fire recharge zone. It's in the documents, in y'all's subdivision.
We feel like we have clarified any questions on it at this time, so, I'm sorry, that's, you'd have to take it up further.
Having restrictions for your subdivisions doesn't mean anything, then. Absolutely nothing. If you can come in and just say, do what you want to do.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Do you have something different to add? If you have something different to add, if not, we do not need a repeat of it, so.
I'm not going to repeat all that, sir. One thing, why are y'all such aggressive to give them an approval when it's not done? I'm going to be interested that they're going to do it, but when did the law change where let's just approve it before it's done? When? Why?
I don't think, I don't think anybody's in a hurry to approve it, it's been being worked on for quite some time. This has been a long process, and I believe it would be common practice that we approve a lot of things, and the work is being done to complete the subdivisions. I think you could drive all over the county and find approved subdivisions that people are in the process of completing, whatever has been agreed to.
You know, it's a law, you're going to approve it.
If it meets, if it meets all of the requirements, yes. Yes. So, well, that's, again, that's up to the commissioner, and if they've looked at all of it, and if they feel it does or does not, that's up to them to decide.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's not done in a timely manner, or done like it states with a cable through it?
Can you call me? We'll be back after.
Right. Right. Commissioner feels confident that what's been agreed to will be completed. If that's not completed, then you can always call the commissioner on the items that's been agreed to, and we will take that up. All right, any other discussion on the item?
I've got a little bit of discussion, I think I can clear it all up. The private road subdivision has nothing to do with putting up a fence. That's the private road itself that he has put up, and that is for him to maintain and a delay to maintain. That's the private road subdivision on the private road portion. And TCQ, I think he has all the Edwards October. You can't hold him with their map, that's what we're going to want, and he got it right away.
Not with your regulations, sir. And he said, we don't sell property before it's approved, and they're already starting to, the pad thing, the road, they're driving. Do people just get to do what they want when they have?
And I believe it would be common practice that we approve a lot of things and the, the work is being done to complete the subdivisions. I think you could drive all over the county and find approved subdivisions that people are in the process of completing whatever has been agreed to.
You know, it's a law. You're gonna approve it.
If it meets, if it meets the, all of the requirements, yes. Yes. So, well, that's, again, that's up to the commissioner and if they've looked at all of it and if they feel it does or does not, that's up to them to, to decide.
One, yeah. One question.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's not done in a timely manner or done like it states with the cable.
Can you call me?
Right.
Back out to you.
Right. Right. We've, right. Commissioner feels confident that what's been agreed to will be completed. If that's not completed, then you can always call the commissioner on the items that's been agreed to. And we will take that up. All right. Any other discussion on the item?
I've got a little bit of discussion. I think I cleared it all up. The proper road subdivision has nothing to do with putting up a fence. That's the property road itself that he has put up. And that is for him to maintain and a delay to maintain. That's the proper road subdivision on the proper road portion. And TCQ, I think he has all the, and and the offer. You can't own here with their map. That's what we're gonna buy. And he got it right over there.
No, but your regulations don't.
And he said, we don't sell property before it's approved? And they're already starting to, the, the, the pad thing, or maybe both home, the roads, that they're drying it? Do people just get to do what they want when they want?
So, so let, let me back it up some. Back before Christmas, we approved it, gave them final approval. And within this court, we found out we missed a step. So we, we had, hey, we gotta go back into this. Now, hold on, hold on. Now, while Judge Schuhart and I researched it, that gentleman could have told us to throw it out the door because we didn't find approval. By law, we couldn't stop anyone. We gave it approval. We reached out to him and at that time, they did have some contracts closing and they stopped from their own seven lots. Now, he was gracious enough to give us to this day to try to get this done. So I asked Brett to make sure that your 10-year guarantee warranty was on the Mylar that was going to be recorded. Is that on there? Okay. With that, I give final approval.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second that we give final approval. All in favor? Any, what is the question? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Final approval granted. Thank you. Next item, on item number 20, discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of vacate and replat of lot one and two. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. I apologize. Item number 19.
We've been waiting there all day long.
Yeah, discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of vacate and replat of lot 56, unit one. And lots 98 and 99, unit two, in Laurel Canyon Ranch subdivision located in precinct one off FM 1283.
Good morning, Judge Commissioner. I'm Kim from Rhodeian Associates. And I'm presenting this replat for preliminary approval. This owner owns these three lots, two acre, roughly two acre lots. One is a little bit larger, two and a half. She would like, she and her husband would like to combine them to one lot, which would be six and a half acres. It's very simple, just combining three lots. The only, the only, it is in two different units. Two lots are in unit two, one is in unit one. But I chose, and let me know if this is okay, to just call it lot 98A and unit two, since two of the lots are in unit two already. So I thought we'd.
That would be up to, that'd be up to Ray Joy if that's how they want to do it. Because I know from conversations with homeowners, lot one or phase one had separate rules, phase two had separate rules, so that's gonna be. I mean, with that being said, what they did here is what we actually like of bigger lots.
Right, okay.
So I will give the preliminary approval of vacate replat of combined lots 56. In unit one and lot 98, 99 in unit two with the approval of the HOA.
Okay.
Alamo.
Yes.
We'll talk about.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed and sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, item number 20. Discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of vacate and replat of lot one and two of Country Brook subdivision, phase one located in precinct one off FM 1283.
So this one is, they moved the lot line. To get around the well and stuff. Am I correct, Jennifer?
David's moving that one line to get around to the utilities.
So you can see how the zigzag that line. It took a little bit from one lot and added to the other lot. It was just more for the sanitary control, isn't it?
Roughly the same.
Yeah, it's about the same acre, just switched sides.
It's just the line changed on it, basically. So that I'll give preliminary approval for vacate replat of lot one and two of Country Brook.
I have a motion and a second for preliminary approval. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed and sign. Motion carries. Okay, we addressed the item 21 and 22 in our earlier session, so we'll go to item 23. At this time, discuss and take possible action on the following items for emergency management. So we have several on here. I think this, Mark, this is your first time in front of the court. Is that correct?
It is, Judge, and I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here with the Honored Court Judge to make my first presentation. Look forward to working with each and every one of you.
So Mark has been working very diligently since the November 14th. I know when the relief arrived. Thank you. He's been working, so this is a lot of emergency management plans. You're gonna hear him talk a little bit about some different things that we do with our C. So I'll let you take it from there, Mark. We'll go ahead and do item A on the LEPC.
Yes, sir. So an LEPC is actually required for jurisdictions and so we're actually establishing ours. We're pulling this together. LEPCs are made up of people who are from leadership, responders, the private sector. And they come together and it's all centered around facilities and transportation agencies that deal with hazardous materials. So we have a lot of hazardous materials moving through Medina County and situated in Medina County. We have rail, we have underground pipeline, we have all the things that go up and down the road in various sized tankers. We also have facilities that have onsite hazardous materials. So an LEPC is a group that meets, we're looking at twice a year. We don't want to have meetings to just have meetings. But they meet to do some planning, some coordinating. It's also the agency that would be receiving the tier two reports, which is a legislated report that those facilities are required to provide to us. And so this is our initial forming. We have already through the judge, we have selected the people that would be on that committee. So we're gonna have two separate categories. We'll have voting members and we'll have non-voting members. And it's something that we can build upon more and more as we go. But this is a good thing for us because it allows us to take a look, a close look, at the kinds of commodities that are coming through our jurisdiction and having a little bit more time to plan for the potential of having to respond to those things.
Now, LEPCs have been around for a long time. It's something we've looked at and of course, kind of Mark's one of the things that when we sat down and we really tried to take this emergency management side of the job and really gave it back to the things, because everybody knows we're a rural county and we really want to be on top of anything to do for emergency responses and coordination with our other agencies and stuff throughout the county. So this is one step that might to do that and kind of get us to a whole new level. So with that said, we would need a motion to approve. I think so. Let's just do it one at a time. So this would be just for approval of the LEPC.
I'll make that motion. Will you approve the LEPC?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the local emergency planning committee known as LEPC. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, B, we'll be talking about the approval of a memorandum of understanding. And I'll let you talk about that part.
Yes, sir. So this is the agreement that a local jurisdiction can have with the state, in particular, the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service. For people who are emergency managers qualified to be able to respond to other jurisdictions when massive disasters take place. They need people who are already trained and credentialed in the positions that are needed to go in and augment what they're doing and to be able to get some control on what, what's going on. Now, I've been a part of the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, what's called All Hazards Incident Management Teams, for about 13 years now. Preliminary for what was called the Alamo Area Incident Management Team, also with the Texas Lone Star IMT. And now we have been reformed and we are under region six. Back in October, I was one of 13 people selected out of the state of Texas to go to the National Fire Academy in Baltimore and to represent the state of Texas in a competition between the team from Texas, the team from Virginia, and the team from Colorado. I'm a Texan. I like bragging. We went in and whipped them pretty good because we, we did twice as much as what everybody else did, which is a good thing. It shows that what we're capable of doing. What this MOU will allow for though, let's say that the, that we have a disaster that happens in one of our neighboring counties and the Forest Service puts out a request for people who are qualified. And so there's a lot of training that goes into what I'm talking about. It takes about, about three years to get qualified in any single position. And currently, I'm qualified as an incident commander, safety officer, operations section chief, planning section chief, situation unit leader, and resource unit leader. So if you take into account, that's a lot of years of getting, getting all that together. But if, if the state requested assistance and if there's not something tying me down so much that the jurisdiction says, hey, we can't do, we can't allow them to leave right now. But if I am allowed to go and assist, then I become a quasi-employee during that time period and the state will actually reimburse the county for my, my salary for that time period. So it's a win-win and I hate to say it this way, but it's always better to go and learn from somebody else's disaster than our own. What you learn on those things and you bring back only strengthens your capability in your local jurisdiction. So that's what this MOU would allow.
Well, so I agree with you, but learning from somebody else. And the more we learn, the more prepared we are. I agree with you 100%. And make sure we wake up and realize what we need to do quick to be prepared.
The highlights, and we did have Maggie look over it to make sure that we were, everything was good with the MOU on our behalf. And again, the highlights are, number one is that if we have anything going on and he can't know, then this doesn't go. I mean, it's up to us as a jurisdiction. We hope we have nothing going on with his position. That would be a red thing. It means that, but if he can deploy, I think it is fantastic, like I said, just to go out. Anytime we, it's, we like it when it's hard to get hands-on training in our jurisdiction. But to go out and be out in the, in the other parts of the world doing this stuff and helping these other people when we can't. And we would be reimbursed, fully reimbursed for his salary from the state.
I think that's what we had last year, kind of all the problems, we don't have a problem with it.
Yes, sir.
We, we thank the help. We got a lot out. I don't mind the district, the county, doing a lot.
I was actually there.
Yes, he was. And that's kind of us returning, doing the same for somebody else when they're in that position. It's Medina County.
We don't have a rule in none of those. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll prove the MOU.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the MOU. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Last item is the approval of the Medina County Emergency Management Basic Plan. This is another, this is, you folks are probably aware of our emergency management plan. It is probably expired and in this, and Mark will talk a little bit more about this, there's actually a new format that they came out with, with not a lot of instruction on. So the document, Jeffrey, you have the book?
Let me.
I'm just gonna show you that Mark prepared this in whole, it's about 600 pages that he put together and with very, well, there's really not much guidance from the state.
We're pretty young, we're a bit.
Right.
I'm a bit older.
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna mean it all. But the main, the main point being here is that we think that there's a very good chance that the state's could actually take this plan and use it as the template because they literally said, we want to do this, but we have no guidance for you to do it. So over the last hour, month and a half.
Yes, sir.
He is, Mark's completed these 600 pages of typing, which I'm just looking at, my eyes are crossing. But we're thankful to have this, so Mark, I'll let you go and take the rest up there.
Exactly as the judge said, the state has been moving for a couple of years trying to get local jurisdictions to transition away from the format we used to use, which was a basic plan, 22 functional annexes and hazard-specific appendices. That's been the format that the state has used for decades. They're trying to go to what the federal government is doing, where you have a basic plan, 15 emergency support functions, and you can have some support annexes as well. However, they have not given any guidance on showing us what one looks like. A lot of jurisdictions, myself included and another jurisdiction, have been asking for a long time, can we see what one of these things looks like? Because so far, it's been trying to explain a tree to a blind man. Nobody could do it. I also have my own little business on the side and so prior to coming to Medina County, I had started writing a couple of what I thought would be tentative templates. When I was fortunate enough to be allowed to come here and serve in Medina County. One of the first things I did is I sent one of my templates to the state regional planner, Steve Harris, with the Texas Division of Emergency Management. And I said, before I go running down the road on writing all these plans, I'd like to get your eyes on it and tell me if you think it's gonna be approved. And a week later, he sent me a message and said, Mark, can we use that as the state's example? And I've actually provided that conversation in a text to the judge as well, so he can see that. Because I did tell him, I don't have a problem with them using mine, but I wanted it in writing. So the good thing is, is with the plans that are written, and now they have copies of all of them. So we have a total of the basic plan, 15 ESFs, and one support annex, and that is for warning. We know that the minute that it is approved by this court, that the state is just chomping at the bit to say, approved.
Don't move.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm proud of, proud of the work you've done on that. It's very good.
I've, I've had my head down like this so long that commissioners and judge, I'm looking forward to getting it up and coming out and visiting with you. This has been a major undertaking to try and get it knocked out as fast as we could.
So other counties will be able to take advantage and just look at your template and say, yes, we, we approve this for this county also.
Exactly. What, what he had me do was go through and everywhere it said Medina County, take out Medina County and the templates that I provided. So that they can go back in and add that, then they can customize it for small things.
Okay.
With that, I'll prove the emergency management basic plan.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the emergency management basic plan and then of course, the support annexes as well with it.
And this, you think this is gonna be for the state of Texas then also?
So we're told that region six, region six, which stretches from Waco to, to us, to about Victoria, is initially, they're, they're gonna take it immediately. And then now they're having the other regions take a look at our, what we have right here.
Awesome. And I will, but just before y'all vote, I'm gonna tie one other piece into this, which is Casterville. Just talking, because it's not an agenda item itself. We have an agenda item for your other part on the, on the, on the agreement on the dispatch, but. So also, Casterville, we've worked out with them to actually mark to be their emergency person as well. They've never really had. Let me, let me back up and tell it. So what kind of ends up happening in our cities, the police chief becomes the emergency manager. And it's kind of, hey, this is your thing. And they're like, what do you mean? It's my thing. I do police work here. And so then the chiefs generally, and I'm not speaking for this chief, I'm just telling you historically what's happened. The chiefs kind of look at the person next below them and go, hey, guess what? You're the emergency manager for this. Because I'm not, and he can delegate it down, right? And then the real issue becomes beyond that, that what really happens is if we have some kind of a response, their very first obligation and duty is to do law enforcement work. And it's what they're doing. And so all of the other pieces of this kind of fall apart in the process. So through this, Casterville has asked and agreed to conversations with the mayor, the police chief, to fall under our plan. So we, just like we have Natalia and we have Lacoste, are under our plan.
Can I hand Scott, dishing that bill?
Yes, yes. Well, they will, they will still, anything in their jurisdiction, they'll still pay for. I mean, it's all, it's all the pay for, but Mark is their, Mark will be the go-to person as the emergency management coordinator for, on their behalf during that. Everything Mark does during that, he won't work with me. He'll work directly to their mayor. That's all the decisions come from their jurisdiction. It's just Mark's expertise and. It's just Mark's expertise and, you know, given that consistency across the county as well.
Perfect, a move.
So that's inside of this plan, I just wanted to point that out. You don't have to sit down, Chief, because we're going to skip to your item and, but let's, at this time, do I, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We're going to go ahead and take up item number 26, because Chief is standing up at this point. Discuss and take possible action on approval of an interlocal agreement for public safety services with the city of Castleville. So just brief, and I'll let Chief take it from there. Nothing, we're doing nothing different between our dispatch and our Castleville, we're doing exactly what we've done. Basically, we've put that on paper because it was a requirement of, and I'll let you take that part.
Essentially going through, we're going through a software change. First, thank you Judge and Commissioners, a software change in Castleville. We're going to be under the Tyler system, which Hondo is, Medina County is. You know, trial by error, you go through it, and we're going through all the checks, checklists that we're going through. The DPS Criminal Justice Information System, CGS, which we all love, says, guess what? You need a plan in place. And when I reached out to the judge and everyone else, there wasn't a current plan in place. So essentially, I sent a draft to our city attorney, she put her stamp on it, I then sent that to the judge, sent it to the DA's office, everybody approved it, and as we move forward, like the judge said, it changes nothing. All it is is saying, it's formalized, you're providing dispatch services for the city of Castleville.
Awesome. And Chief, thank you for working with us on all of that as well.
Oh, thank you.
So appreciate, for the court, also, this also did go through our legal counsel, they took a look at everything on it, it's been sheriff's offices looked at it, obviously, because it's dispatch, so everybody is happy with, with the document.
I'm going to reapprove the interlocal agreement for public safety communications services with the city of Castleville.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement. All in favor, or any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Chief, thank you for the long drive over here to God's country this morning.
No, it's not that much of a drive, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item number 24, discuss and take possible action on approval of the following grant items, and this will be, Edward, are you going to lead these, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Item A, we're going to be talking about approval of the resolution for fiscal year 23, State Homeland Security Program Grant Application for a hazmat spill response trailer for emergency management.
A lie, personal inspection.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, I realized that when I read to the end.
So I'm really excited about this opportunity to share with you. We were required by ACOG during December to do this massive assessment, it was about a 17-page Excel document to identify all of the resources that we have, law enforcement, fire, EMS, look at our hazards and threats, and then part of that was discovery, even though I already is a little bit aware of it, that we have no capability currently to respond to hazardous material spills in Medina County. The only thing that we can rely on is that sometimes some of the fire apparatus have a bag or two of dry absorbent, that's it. In Bear County, when I was there, we had established what we called spill response. I took the same kind of step here and looked at it, put together some information, we submitted for a grant. In fact, I had less than a half a day to put the grant application information together to send to ACOG. This week, I went to the, the subcommittee meeting for fire and hazmat at ACOG, which was where we were going to look at all the fire hazmat grant applications for this round and rank them. And I got to present to them, and I was very surprised when we got to the end of it, they ranked our project number one in the region. Not only did they rank it number one, they recommended that I add a little more money to it. So with the help of Beverly Hamm, who has been instrumental in pulling this all together, because there's a lot of codes and things that have to be added into these, these are not simple applications, they make the IRS look really bad, they really do. So we have increased the grant ask that we're going to put forward from 12,000 to 18,000. The final vote will be February 14th, but being ranked number one, we will at least get that 12,000 and possibly get 18. And that would be to purchase a trailer, dry absorbent, dry absorbent pads, dry absorbent, they're called booms, they look like the cigarette roll that they throw out to be able to quickly absorb. Also have some of the putty that's called the plug-and-dike, so if there's a ruptured saddle tank, you mix that and then you shove it into the hole and it hardens and it will seal. Brooms, shovels, and some drums to go inside of the trailer. So it's, it's a nice little turnkey, and to go along with that, I also have Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Service coming in on May the 2nd through the 4th to offer hazmat operations training to all of our first responders.
I've got a big question on that. That happens, what's exactly what's happened, happens in my precinct a lot.
Yes, sir.
A lot. With all the ground trucks we got, air comes direct near the diesel field. And not trying to pass a buck at all. Ninety percent of these or more are on state highway.
Yes, sir.
What happens? The county, the state, the state gets a little touchy every time I step foot in their Their answer to the whole thing is, well, let's see what it looked like in the morning after smoke clears.
Well, it is that, I mean, it is state right away, but what Mark's trying to do here, and I guess, I don't think what he said in there also, is that this would be available to all of the emergency response. It's a centralized from emergency management to give them resources that they don't currently have. And the goal of anything for us, right, so locally, regardless, we want to get there no matter what jurisdiction it is, and try to minimize anything that's going on. So that's what we're really trying to do. Want to plug the hole so it can't leak more than it's leaking. Now, are we going to start to barricade it so it can't run into a waterway? Once that initial's done, then okay, the state and their resources would take it over. So we're really talking about a fast, get in there, hey, I'm bleeding, stick a Band-Aid on it, right? Hold the bleeding until we, do the best we can.
The trouble with this, 90% of the stuff happening, don't happen from 8:00 to 5:00, so what are we going to do with the crew? What are we, are we going to be training our crews?
Actually, what I'm saying is-
On the county level?
Once I get that resource, I wanted to do the dog and pony show and training with all of our fire departments, where I will take it to them, fire departments, because initially, they're going to be the ones that are going to be on scene. We're going to train them how to, how to deploy this. And one of the good things is because, you know, ACOG always wants to know, okay, we pay for the initial, how are you going to fund this in the future? So I've already verified it with our ESDs. The ESDs currently charge responsible parties through their insurance for specific things. So we, if we utilize three or four bags of this stuff and some pads and other things out of the trailer, then the fire departments can actually charge back to their insurance company so that we can replenish our stock.
Okay, I can understand all that, but this happens at 2:00 in the morning, where is this just going to be stored at?
Well, right now-
Are you, county yards or?
Well, right now, what we're looking at is, is the area right adjacent to the sheriff's office, right behind my office, where we already have other trailers and things, we'll keep that in a centralized place, right? But we can actually respond faster than if we ask somebody else, because not only can I pull that trailer, once we get the firefighters trained up, I mean, we can have sheriff's office or anybody that, that the county allows to go in and hook to that trailer and take it to that location so that we can quickly do something. What we're talking about is mitigation, we don't remediate, so we're not doing cleanup, we just want to keep bad things from getting worse.
Yeah, to your point, I would see that, you know, what we would be shooting towards is having, you know, it may be that was Mark trained some of the Hondo fire people, for example, those midnight, they would get called out.
Well, they'd be nice keeping within the ESDs.
Right.
Because they're the ones that are at 2:00 in the morning. Our county road crews aren't there.
Right, no, no, definitely. We want to keep it on the emergency response side.
And all I'm telling you, I have some constituents that seat ground trucks every day, if it's going to be a problem, there's going to be a diesel leak.
Yes, sir.
The state says if it's not over 200 gallons, don't even worry about it. So.
But the problem with us is like we saw with that one section where we were continually having vehicles that were having accidents, diesel and other things build up in that asphalt, and then you get just a little bit of moisture on it, and it becomes like a skating rink. And so it's, it's incumbent upon us to try and go in and mitigate that, and then to also look at TechDOT and others and say, hey, you know, okay, we did this initial, you need to start bringing in your assets and resources to make this right.
Okay.
Good enough, there's a lot of questions, and it just don't work as well as it does like on piece of paper.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for the Homeland Security Program Grant Application.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, next is item B, Acceptance of Public Health Infrastructure Allocation from the Department of State Health Services, and I believe our auditor's going to handle that on behalf of the health unit.
Yes, this is a, an award, the county has been awarded, an amount of 260,000, and it's for the health unit, and basically, this fund, these funds' expectations are to sustain the existing staff, to hire additional staff, and support the positions, travel expenses, and any other expenses that the health unit might come across. This is a completely new program to the health unit, and they have five years to spend these funds.
No matching funds?
No match for this one.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the public health infrastructure allocation.
Sir. I have a second motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Item C, Approval of Letter Obligating Matching Funds for TM 5420 fiscal year 2022 Post-Fire Mitigation Grant Program, Project Grant for Warning Signs. Man, I feel like we're really in here talking about all the disasters today, but this is a good one too, so warning signs.
So this is a grant that we are applying for, we have not been awarded yet, I believe Commissioner Newman brought this to our attention, we found a grant, applied for it. And again, we have not been awarded, but this letter will tell the grant committee that we are committing 25% matching funds if we were to be awarded the funds. So it would be a total of $10,000 per precinct, and then each precinct would receive an additional 30,000.
Yeah, so this was after the fire up in Lake, of course, that's going on up there with our homemade barricades and stuff, and DPS laughing at us and telling us to take that junk home. We started talking about, well, you know, it'd be nice to have a trailer set up with barricades and stuff, that way, we just hook up the trailer and go whether it was flooding and fire, disaster, whatever it was, and each precinct had a trailer set up to go. You know, we put a few tanks on it for fuel, gives me fuel for some. So with the help of Mark Miller and his bunch, they actually brought this grant to our attention and said, here, after Beverly and I searched through Tony Gonzalez's office, you know, through different places, we couldn't find anything, they found it and got the Beverly on it. And we kind of put a wish list together, it was enough barricades for each precinct to have 100 A-frame barricades eight foot long, 50 cones, trailer, and some smaller barricades, which probably isn't enough for each precinct, but it's a start.
Added to what we already have.
Yeah, to what we have.
I have one quick question, the one, two, three, four, fifth one down, the A-frame unrated with signage, what signage are we talking about there?
It was like real close.
Okay.
And I got all this off of Ranger and Goodline websites, this is kind of what me and Beverly got, the wish list. I think it's a good idea, I think we need it. I mean, if we were to go out and purchase this all out, you know, it's going to cost us 40, 50,000 dollars a precinct, which we really can't afford that type of a hit all of the time on signage, you know? So with that, I'm going to make the motion, we approve the letter obligation matching of funds to the TM 5420 FY22 Post-Fire Mitigation Grant.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I just want to say, I think this is fantastic, I think back to the emergency management side, to have this thing ready to go. It isn't just a matter, it's that sheriff's office out there when we're having flooding and, you know, they're trying, they're waiting, they're trying to keep a road closed, so to have everything ready to go where we can make quick response is, is fantastic. I did mention, I think, to Commissioner Newman, that y'all have done so well with your, your program on our roads and working together. I said to me, having four of these traders would be another one that, you know, the problem we have is not always in one precinct, so to be able to come together with all these assets and get out there and deploy across an area really quickly and close roads and do that, I think in certain situations would be really fantastic, so.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you on that.
Thank you for finding this.
You know, sometimes precinct one, precinct two are flooded and precinct 4 are dry, we need them, you know, they can mobilize and go, and vice versa, whatever we need to do to continue this work relationship that's going on.
Yes, and to that point, I would also add, you know, the state of Texas and TechDOT, they've cut more and more resources out, so used to, 10 years ago, you could call and they would be right there, and today, if you could get a crew, you're lucky at all, which, you know, we have, we have all of our county resources that are tied up waiting on something we can't get a lot of the time, so.
Are these, are these closed-in trailers or are they just a flat?
No, they're 20-foot flatbed trailers. We've got longer ones in case we need to put a compressor on it or fuel tanks for fuel instead of truck by truck, we could have a fuel tank on it, you know, stuff like that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 25, Discuss and Take Possible Action on Approval of TransUnion Subscriber Agreement for Trad Services for the Public Defender's Office.
So this is a software, Vanessa can give you a little more information, it's, it's a 30-day free trial, they're wanting to try it out, see how it works for their investigators. If they decide to keep it, then we would bring that agreement to your attention, but we do need Commissioners' Court approval to even sign the 30-day free trial agreement. Do you want more information on the software?
The investigators requested the database, we currently use DPS at no cost, but this will streamline the work that they do and the information that they're able to get that the attorneys need.
Okay.
Will we approve the TransUnion Subscriber Agreement?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That was quick for the weight, huh Vanessa?
Yes.
And we hate software. Just letting you know, we do hate software. It's costly.
Okay, let's see. Next item, 20, we took care of 26 already, so item 27, Discuss and Take Possible Action on Approval of Participation in the TAC Cybersecurity Training for County Employees. Jennifer, you, you have anything else on that, or are we?
This is someone who you-
Yes, yes, it's the, it's the one we all, we do, and I think we just, we have filled out on there. Jennifer, do you want to just tell them who's on there, because these are blank copies?
Yes, so you decided that we're going to have Jessica in our office be the administrator, and then of course add HTS as the IT administrator.
So Jennifer, Jessica will oversee, making sure that everybody's done it out of our office.
This is a thing we're already doing, correct?
Correct.
And we're saying that we have to continue doing that.
We have to do it every year, and so she'll be by being new to get it completed.
You'd be surprised how many repeat offenders we have.
Yes, you would.
Oh, yes.
You sure would.
Well, and it's not doing any good, is it?
We, we're talking about it in the actual-
So there's repeat offenders in everything.
Hey, does that help? We ain't got an internet system for a while, right?
Right, we just keep going back after the repeat offender. Okay, any, I have a motion.
Make motion, we approve the interlocal agreement on participation in Tech Cybersecurity Training.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Something about cybersecurity really worries us. Discuss and take-
Wake them up.
So we have a motion and a second to do the approval of the participation in the TAC Cybersecurity Training. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Number 28, Discuss and Take Possible Action on Approval of Fire Alarm Function Testing Agreement with Deckwith Electronics for the old jail, which, we say the old jail, which is actually Pat Bronner's office now and Ruben's office. So this is agreement- So, this is agreement, again, one that we do every year. It is a renewal.
It's a renewal?
It is, yes, sir.
I move to approve the fire alarm function testing agreement.
I'll second.
Something I'm getting behind.
Excellent. I have a, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second that we approve the agreement. Any discussion? I'm going to just point out to you guys on page, on the second page here of the agreement, and just to make sure you are all on board with this. It's six hundred and eighty-four dollars a year. They do have down below optional repair and labor for three hundred and forty-two dollars. Then if something went wrong with a part that they put on, they would come back and repair it at no cost. I did not do that. We haven't in the past. We just, and I don't think we've used it. We take our, take a chance. But if we want to do something else, we can. But if not, we did the basic of the six eighty-four.
I'm moving with the basic.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, number twenty-nine, discuss and take possible action on approval of change orders and other matters regarding to the construction of the courthouse annex in jail addition. Believe we have just the, no, we actually have the two of them on here. I'm going to, the first one is for services from the architects, which was to come back and do some work on the parking lot to make sure that what we were being told from the contractor's side.
This is what we tabled last week.
This is the one you tabled last week. This is to come back and look over the process of what was being done by Teal's group on our behalf. Judge Shoehart and Gary McClure had looked over this, and this funds come out of not additional funds, but there is a expense line for the, in the architects, that that's where this money is from. They both agreed that this was a warranted expense for the county.
I will make a motion to approve the change order, a matter regarding the construction of the courthouse annex in jail. Is that the one you're on?
Yes, sir. Got a motion? A second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign, please. Motion carries. Next item, number thirty, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of resignations from Jonathan Rody and Jody Jacobs from Medina County ESD number three.
Judge, short, wait, was there a second change order?
There's three.
What's that?
There's three change orders.
Yeah, there were, there were, well, there was the other one from last week, the one that Edward.
Last week.
The one that, did you go over it with them, Edward?
Yes, that was the one that I was aware of. That was just moving from contingency amounts from the annex to the jail.
Correct.
But I see, hoping that last page was on the last one, others like, the cost is going down.
That was a credit, right. Yeah, we have a credit on there also.
I'll argue about a credit.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, sir.
No, yes, yeah, the credit on it. Okay, so item thirty that we're on, take possible action excepted of the resignation of Jonathan Rody and Jody Jacobs for ESD number three. Can I have a motion on that?
I move that we accept the resignations.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to accept their resignations. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirty-one is the replacement, so discuss and take possible action on appointment of Jonathan Peterson and George Mayo to Medina County ESD number three board. They would, they both agreed to serve on that board.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve appointment of Jonathan Peterson and George Mayo to Medina County ESD number three board. Any other discussion? Motion is approved, I'm sorry, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
All abstain.
Okay. So, we have one abstention, motion carries. Commissioner Lynch did abstain. Item number thirty-two, public hearing to receive comments to reduce the speed limit on the following, County Road three fifty-three in precinct one and County Road six forty in precinct three. So, we will open the public hearing for those items at eleven eighteen AM. Do we have anybody in our audience for the public hearing? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at eleven eighteen point something. Item number thirty-three, discuss and take possible action on approval of an order to reduce the speed limit on the following, County Road three fifty-three in precinct one and County Road six four zero in precinct three. Do you want to talk about precinct one first?
Yeah, this County Road three fifty-three goes to the Vulcan Plan. It has most speed limit on it. So, of course, you know, they're going to go as fast as they can, so. And there's plenty of people that live on this road and use this road. So, with that being said, I am proposing thirty-five mile an hour zone.
How much?
Thirty-five mile an hour.
I'll second.
We, we can take them up, do you want to take them up separate or is together okay with y'all? Okay, then I'll let you go ahead and talk about the other.
Six forty, also, I'm going to propose thirty-five miles an hour. Part of it's, part of it's still gravel. It spans between seventeen ninety-six south of DeHennis to four sixty-two south of Hondo. So, I'm going to propose thirty-five miles per hour on that one also. Several hairpin turns, sharp turns.
All right. Do you want to include that one in your motion?
So, the motion, we, I make the motion, we set the speed limit thirty-five miles an hour on three, County Road three fifty-three and on County Road six forty.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the order reducing the speed limit on County Road three fifty-three and County Road six forty to thirty-five miles per hour. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign, please. Motion carries. Item number thirty-four, discuss and take possible action on declaring items from the following office as surplus and or salvage and authorized disposal. Auditor.
Okay, so the first sheet has the first item on that first sheet, it's going to be disposed, that's a laptop. All the other items on there are going to be transferred from the health unit to emergency management. A bunch of raiders we have just in a while, I hope that emergency management has some use for it. That's A and B, and then C and D are the second two pages.
And I might just interject on those, just kind of an FY to the court. So, those items were bought through grant funds through the health unit at one point. Items that really we've maintained and used on the emergency management side, I guess Mark said. But we've we've kind of taken care of those assets for them. At a certain point, they're able to declare those off of all their inventory, and so what they're doing is just, they don't want to have to track them all, so they're actually transferring them to emergency management now to have the asset. And then there is a separation which was put on here, I think, to a great idea. So, you're noticing that you've got, we're trying to separate out what's actually salvage and then what's actually going to be transferred or or surplus items, so. Okay, I'm sorry.
And then we have some items from JP three. So, we are getting rid of some tables, file cabinets from their old office down at the courthouse. We are transferring an executive desk, which is JP's desk, to JP one, or who did JP one took a look at it, decided he wanted it. It's in very good condition, so we're trying to move it from JP three to JP one. And then we are getting rid of some old laser tape cleaner.
Excellent. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. We declare the items as from the following offices as surplus or salvage.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to declare the items on item thirty-four as salvage and surplus as explained by the auditor. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Item number thirty-five, discuss and take possible action on rescheduling the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three regular Commissioners Court meeting due to court members attending a conference. So, as item says, we will be out of town at conference on the the twenty-third. And recommendation, I don't have my calendar, I'm looking for the the following Thursday. We would see if y'all would be amenable to moving that to the following Thursday.
That is good. Me, do you know that me and you have a meeting that afternoon?
What's that, sir?
With Catville.
On which day?
That's the second.
Would be March second.
Yeah, on the second, me and you have a meeting in Catville. They're caught at two o'clock.
Well, we'll be good.
Oh, good.
So, March second and that'll be still a Thursday, but just moving it a week. Does that work for all of y'all?
Mm-hmm. Okay, I got one question on that. I talked to Jennifer a little bit about it. During these conferences, and we by far do not want to violate the Open Meetings Act, can we, what do we need to do if three of us want to drive up there together? I don't want Danny, if he goes with us, to ride in the back of the truck again.
If he doesn't make a motion before we're done today, he may ride in the back of the truck anyway, so you're going to run.
You know, I hate to have the newcomer here riding back in the truck. And you know, and that's not the only thing. We're together the whole time. I know this political field, everybody's got a camera and everybody's got a finger. We go out to eat, we go out to dinner, we go back and forth to the conferences instead of taking four vehicles. I don't know what our plan is going to be. I'm just taking it as as it works out. I don't want to have no problems down the road.
I don't know if I'm driving.
So, we'll, we'll let our legal counsel just address that. How's that?
The the Open Meetings Act is real specific, you know, in terms of when you got a forum established. But it specifically excludes things like conferences, social events. So, long as county business is not discussed, then it's not a problem. There's going to be times when you do have a forum present at something. And so, if the Open Meetings Act, and I think that makes sense, alabats language from the Open Meetings Act that discusses that through the the handbook, but so long as county business is not discussed, it's contemplated by the Open Meetings Act and it's it's legislatively, you know.
So, in other words, long we don't sit there and talk about Edward on our trip all the way up and all the way back.
You get to, I actually, I'm I'm not sure.
County business, I mean, it's it's contemplated that those things are going to happen.
So, we should be safe.
Yeah, I'm not even worried about in the truck on the way up because Commissioner Sitter is going to be the only one talking. Everybody's going to be listening. So, I'm not even sure that one's really a legitimate problem. So, I'm worried, worried, once we're there, we just can't talk about any business. So, if I don't talk to you while we're there, it's because I don't want to break the law, so it's all good.
So, if I can turn radio up.
That's it. Excellent. No, I think those are good points and things we should be talking about before we take off, when our whole group will be together, so. Awesome. So, Commissioner Sitter, you just pay the bill every night so we don't have to talk about it.
I'll handle that.
All right, let's see. Next item then, oh, did we vote on that date? We did not vote on the date.
I move to reschedule the February twenty-third regular Commissioners Court meeting to March second.
So, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to move the regularly scheduled meeting from February twenty-third to March the second, twenty twenty-three. Any other discussion?
Yes, I do have more discussion on that. On that day, I have talked to Commissioner Newman, and he might want to be in attendance on that tech stop meeting with me and you in Catville. Can y'all post that or is he, can he come along?
Well, we can do it as an open, we'd have to post it as an open meeting. But then Maggie, they're actually not attending. I mean, we could post it as an open meeting, but you also get into, really, our open meeting should be here at our place if we're trying to do an open meeting. So, I would probably be, you know.
They have to stay at home then or?
Well, or vice versa, or the two of y'all go to it.
I think you need to be there.
So, I think.
We have some major, major meetings coming up at tech stop, that's all I'm saying. They're major.
Yeah, I think we'd be better off to do just the two and come back.
Just the two of us.
I've done postings before where more than two.
You have posted before?
Yes, and then the posting is as where the meetings can be held, but there will be no action taken by the members of the court.
Will you go with that, Maggie?
It it doesn't hurt to post it. I mean, by all means.
Well, we have to, because there'll be three of us.
I'll just let you know what's going on with that one. That's all right. We took care of it.
I think we've done that before, but we just post.
Yes, I've done it before.
Yeah, just me and her go. Me and the P. It won't be the first one. There's going to be a lot coming up.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of moving the date? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirty-six, discuss and take possible action on revision to Article thirteen, revision and cancellation of Medina County subdivision rules and regulations. I believe you put this on right, Commissioner.
I have reached out to Bob Bass, and he's actually looking for the legal opinion on this issue. It this basis of whether or not the county should pay for John Smith down the road to pay for his advertisement for him to re-rip back, which, as I mentioned, it was on two thousand dollars in fees, and I paid for people to rip back the, my my personal opinion is, if you want to rip back your lot, you pay for the advertisement.
Then the code called for having to have a population of over.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand? It's kind of a moot point for us. We choose to do it. Jennifer, have we always done that, notified people? But we don't have to, according to statute, because we're not two hundred and fifty thousand strong. So, we could just eliminate it altogether and not make that regulation if we chose to.
Well, and that's, you know, reach out to Bob Bass, and we're talking about that.
See what his recommendation is.
He he said you, he doesn't say why we should be paying for it, but he said if you do, you can actually, we'll pay for it to go in the paper, but you're going to pay us back.
Does he say, why are you even doing it?
Well, no, he didn't. And I think I may have caught him at a toddy time because he said, I'll get back with you. So.
Okay.
I haven't heard, this was two weeks ago, I've talked to him, I haven't got a response back, so I'm going to.
Should we wait to see?
So, I want to, we had it here just in case. He gave me his opinion, which I haven't got yet, so we're just going to table it to the next court.
Okay.
Okay.
Until we get the final decision on it.
Okay, you want to make the motion to table it, sir?
I'm going to motion to table it, Mr. President.
Have a motion and a second to table item number thirty-six till we get more information. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Number thirty-seven, court announcements.
Uh, yeah, hopefully next week I'll be moving into my remodeled office. Maggie may have my office after next week. We are working on projects as we speak. We, as soon as the weather warms up a little bit, we're going to put the final code on cemetery road. Reclaim, we're just working hard in precinct two. I know we're waiting to back up so we can start another one of our projects. And that, we're staying busy.
I am glad New Year's is over with, and all I can tell you what, everybody talks about doom and gloom and all this other stuff. I don't know where it's all going happening yet. I have had more meetings with tech stock, with engineers and sort of other than I have probably in the last six months of last year. So, the development might be, the building might be slowing down, but the investors are still coming out from Medina County.
Good precinct three.
Precinct four, working on roads in Twin Lakes and getting County Road seven, seven, seven ready to pay hopefully in the next month, month, and a half.
I love you there, buddy.
Yeah.
Awesome. Really very little from my side, kind of piggybacking. I've had the discussion a few times, you know, talk, I I fully expect it. I mean, we're very somewhat insulated from recession. I mean, just for one thing, there's still a thousand people a day moving to Texas. So, when we see a little slowdown, I think it's more the local person that lives here already, but we still have a lot of people that are moving to our area. So, I think for us, it's just, Commissioner Sitter alluded to, just lots of meetings, lots of discussion, and what we're going to do with all of our growth and work on all of our issues infrastructure-wise. And then I'll say the positive side is there's also still a lot of opportunities going on out there for us. Lots of big businesses looking at Medina County as well, you know, so I think things are, we're in a good place. With that said, I do think we will ask for item thirty-eight, adjourn. Somebody have a, Commissioner, you want to make a motion to adjourn? You could go in. I'll make the one in there. I have a motion and a second that we adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Awesome. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.